Okay, good evening and welcome to the special meeting of the Orange Board of Finance. Today is Monday, March 25th. Call the meeting to order at 6:01. And we'll start by having everyone introduce themselves, beginning on my right.
Anna Mann.
Kevin McNamara.
John Cifarelli, Finance Director.
Joe Nuzzo.
Jim Leahy.
Ajit Jain.
Kevin Houlihan, thank you. Item number three, public dialogue. There's no public, so we'll move on. I'd like a motion to move item six, Budget Discussion, up to item four.
So moved.
Motion by Kevin.
Second.
Second by Anna. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye opposed, abstain, unanimous. Great, thank you. So, the new item four, Budget Discussion. John, I don't know if you want to lead us off, or we have the town attorneys here to discuss.
I'll defer to you. That's fine.
And before Vin talks, I'm just sorry. This is for us to recommend to the Board of Selectmen. We have no ultimate. It's the town attorney and the Board of Selectmen who will, you know, deal with this matter, but we want to recommend to them that they do what Vin's about to present. All right, thank you, sir.
Correct, and thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, I was asked by not only the Chair of this body, but by the assessor, to look into whether or not the town can phase in any incremental increase in assessment over a period of time, and what that time would be. And you should have a memo from me dated March 22nd, where I opined that yes, this town does have the ability to phase in the incremental increase realized from the October 1, 2023 revaluation, and then what that term is. Now, I will say that I had a conversation with the tax assessor today, and I just want to verify that term. So, my term of five years was driven by a memo that the undersecretary Heft had written back, and it's attached to my memo, September 7, 2021. So, at that time, there was discussion between the town and OPM as to when the town's next revaluation should actually be scheduled, and OPM disagreed with us initially. And Mark, our tax assessor, and I went through this exchange with OPM, and ultimately, OPM, through its undersecretary Heft, agreed that our analysis was correct. So, what I have done for you is, first of all, my conclusion is that yes, you can, the town has the ability to phase in the incremental increase. That's statutory, that's straightforward. But, it was my understanding, based upon the undersecretary's memo, that the last revow was October 1, 2018, but in fact, according to the assessor, it was 2017. So, five years from that date is slightly different. However, like in everything else in government, it depends on what legislation has been passed by Hartford. And there has been a number of legislations related to the Town of Orange and deferment of the implementation of a revaluation over the years. And so, in order to give you a better understanding of my analysis, that's why I went through history from 2011 forward. And that picks up on page two of my memo. And so, just for members of the public, back in 2011, we were scheduled to conduct a revaluation. We got permission under Public Act 11-239 to delay that from October 1, 2011 to October 1, 2012. And the town's next revaluation, following its 2012 revow, was then scheduled for 2017, October 1, 2017. But after Public Act 11-239, the legislature passed Public Act 17-240, Section 5, which delayed our revow from October 1, 2017 to October 1, 2018. Now, again, I discussed with the assessor today, that's why I believed it was October 1, 2018, based on that special legislation. However, the assessor said the revow was conducted in 2017. I'm going to confirm that with the assessor, but let's just go with it for the moment. If you carry it forward, and if specifically, if you look at the undersecretary's memo of September 7, 2021, the undersecretary goes through this entire analysis. And what we had done is, because we didn't want to get caught in the future, we wanted him to memorialize his understanding now, based upon our corrective statements to him. And he does exactly that in this memo. So, he concludes, "Upon this review, the Town of Orange is not required to implement their next revaluation until October 1, 2022." Okay, that's page two of his memo.
Just let me get there, Vinny.
Yes, sir.
And if you can educate me on something when we get there, I'd really appreciate it.
Yes, and actually, I want to back up for a moment and just say-
Go ahead.
-that revaluations occur once every five years. Okay, so, what you would do is say, "We've conducted a revow today, for the sake of this conversation." You would count forward five years, that's when your next revow is supposed to take place. But because of certain factors that occur in the economy, from time to time, over the years, since actually 2005, the town has sought legislative permission to defer and to phase in. And that has happened, I'm going to say regularly, over the years, you know, and the legisla- it was all done via legislation. Okay? So, we do not have the right to deviate from the schedule unless the legislature so authorizes. But, so every action that the town has taken has been subject to proper legislative authority.
Let me get me here. First of all, in this memo-
Yes.
-in the paragraph that starts with the words, "For these five municipalities-"
Yes.
"-I'd like to get quickly educated as to the following statement. As this legislation was compulsory and not mandatory..." Can you help me understand in practical terms what compulsory but not mandatory means?
Yes, so, it was a municipal option. So, compulsory sounds like-
Yeah, it sounds like you have to do it.
That have to do, but it was actually a municipal option. So, required action by the municipality to delay the revaluation. And so, that means action of the legislative authority, the legislative authority is the Board of Selectmen in town.
That's the first thing. Second thing, going back in your memo, which I really appreciate you spending the time to do this on such short notice. But in your statement here, right on the second page, on the history, so I'm reading it, right? And I'm seeing number one, we were supposed to do it in 2011, but we delayed a year.
Yes.
Right? But after we delayed a year, it got to 2012, then we flipped up five years later. Okay? So, when it gets to 17 and we delay a year, why aren't we flipping up five years later to 23, which would next make it, we're right in tune right now?
Right.
Am I missing something here?
Yeah, well, what you're missing is, it's driven by the language of the legislation. In some instances, the legislation says that although you're deferring a year, the five years starts from the year that you should have conducted your revow.
But that's not what that was.
Well, exactly.
Okay.
And that's where the confusion lied with the OPM in 2021, because the legislation did not say, "Start counting five years from the year precedent." It was five years from the year that you actually conducted your revaluation. All right? So, and with the, now where do we stand today? So, when we trace our way forward, we have our 2011 revow gets deferred to 2012. Five years forward, 2017. We have this legislation that allows us to go to 2018. My memory isn't exact on whether or not we did or not, but according to the undersecretary, we did, so I was going with it. But according to our assessor, we did not. Regardless, you would go five years forward from the date that we conducted our last revow, 2017 or 2018, which would be 2022 or 2023. However, as we exhale, what happens is, there's additional legislation. And the legislation says, if you, I believe scroll to the next page-
Just tell me where, Vin.
So, where I say notably, in his memo, all right, what the, what the-
Oh, next page.
Right.
Yeah, there we go.
Okay.
There we go.
So, as I'm saying that it should be 2023, again, we can say 23 or 22, depending upon which it is. But what the undersecretary's memo in his, so what happens is, the legislature passes Public Act 22-74. 22-74 now has this legislative idea of creating regions, with five regions within our state. And under the thought process, that municipalities are going to be able to cost share with the, with the costs associated with, you know, revaluation and, you know, and services, that we're going to create these regions, and every municipality within the region is going to conduct a revow on the same date.
There are nine of them, right?
There are nine regions.
Nine thousand, yeah.
Right? But, and what I did here is, and I'll pass around so you can follow. And I have, I highlighted for you, and this is only, I gave you Section 7 of the Public Act, because I didn't want to kill trees.
Oh, you get a couple.
Do you need another?
No, we got an extra.
So, Section 7 of Public Act 22-74 repeals and replaces Section 12-62 of the general statutes. And if, what I did for you, although mine, I think I gave away my copy, that's okay. Vinny, yes?
Can't you do this, copy, come on?
No, I have a copy here, it's just not highlighted. I have it here. If you look at Section B1, thank you, here Jim.
Joe's got two.
So, if you look at Section B1 of the new legislation, it says, "Commencing October 1, '06, and until September 30, '23, each town shall implement a revow not later than the first day of October that follows by five years, the October 1st assessment date on which the town's previous revow became effective. Then as a proviso, provided a town that opted to defer a revow pursuant to 1262L shall implement a revow not later than the first day of October that follows by five years, the first date on which the town's deferred revow became effective." Says the same thing, when your last revow became effective, you count forward five years. October 1, 2017, plus five is October 1, 2022, by my math, or October 1, 2018, plus five is October 1, 2023, by my math. Exhale. All right, let's move forward, for the sake of this moment. If you go to the attachment, Mr. Leahy, that follows undersecretary Heft's memo, his second memo, there's a listing of all the towns in the state of Connecticut.
Oh, we went through this last time.
Yeah, we did.
Right? And if you go to the Town of Orange, which is on page three of that revow schedule-
On the bottom, Jim, there it is.
Right in the middle of our screen right now.
Exactly. You'll see, revow prior to Public Act 22-74, he says 2026. I just read you the language of the Public Act. That cannot be correct, as a matter of fact, let alone as a matter of law. Right? He then extrapolates from 2026, 26, then he goes 30, then he goes 35. However, for, just giggles, as we say, if you, Mr. Leahy, go back two pages. Because within our now regional, I think it's the, was it the southern regional revow district or zone, and I'm just going to pick one, Bethany.
Oh, Vinny, I got a slide on this. I did the same thing.
Okay. Is within our zone. Under no circumstance-
Right here, Vinny, you can use this.
Yeah, so, under no circumstances does the OPM schedule dates to get municipalities within the zone to coincide with the same year. And I think by their schedule, it will not ever be regionalized, definitely not before 2040. So, I don't believe the revow schedule that has been published by OPM conforms to the law in the first instance, but, and what's been articulated by OPM is, "Well, it's going to take time." My reading of the law doesn't give OPM the flexibility of that time. Okay? But, when our, you know, when we, and I'll just use the proverbial way, I've not spoken to OPM yet, but when we speak to OPM, they say, "Well, there's a caveat in the law that allows us to compel you to do this in 2026, so you only got two years." I said, "Show me the law." Right? Because I'm reading the law, and the law is pretty straightforward, and nowhere in the law, other than saying, in subsection now B, if you go back to what I handed out to you, what is highlighted, it says, "Commencing October 1, 2023, each town shall implement a revow not later than the first day of October that follows by five years, an October 1st assessment date, in accordance with a revow schedule prescribed by the secretary." For the revaluation zone. If you look at the published schedule, it's not done by zones. Okay? So, I don't understand how what is being published by OPM conforms to the law. And looking at the history of revows in the Town of Orange, again, at worst, I believe, we're scheduled for October 1, 2027, and at best, October 1, 2028, depending upon when our last revow occurred. So, for purposes of moving forward, you know, my thought process is this. If it's four years, it should be a factor of 25. If it's five years, it should be a factor of 20. We need to, meaning the phasing in of the assessment, which would have an impact on-
Twenty percent.
What's that? Yeah, percent, yes, percent. So, yes, I apologize for speaking like everyone knows what I'm talking about. So, we have a revow that went into effect, that we're allowed to break apart by a factor, based upon the number of years that remains in our term until our next revow. We don't know what that term is, yet. But we know by, under no circumstances should it be less than four years. And it probably could be five years. So, the recommendation from this body, because you're correct, Mr. Chair, you don't have the authority to do anything other than make recommendations, and then the Board of Selectmen can take that under advisement, would be that the Board of Selectmen should adopt legislation to implement the assessment, the incremental increase in the assessment through a phase in, you know, of not less than 25, of not more than 25%.
So, but Vin, basically, we make a recommendation to them, where they should support our recommendation.
I would see no reason why they wouldn't.
Please.
You know, but again, that, I don't want to speak for that body, that body has its own mind. But, yes, so, yes. If there are any questions-
What he just said, does somebody want to make that motion?
I just, I'll make that motion for sure.
Second.
Sent by a she, any further-
Yeah, so, just a quick question. So, the minimum, Vin, that you could assess per year, or the max, is 20, is 25%. You can phase it in at 25% over four years, but I don't believe you can go under 25%.
Well, if we had five years, we could go 20.
Yeah, but I read somewhere in the law that you couldn't go under 25.
Depends which, there are three methods.
Yep.
And in one of those methods, yes, would be 25%. But, this would be under, under the first method that the statute lays out. And it would basically be, the factor would be the number of years in your term. So, five goes into 120%. But, what, the thinking here is 25% because I'm hedging on it, it's October 1, 2027. Now, if it's, again, as-
If new information comes out between now and the special Board of Selectmen meeting, they can adjust that.
Yeah, they could make the adjustments.
They can adjust it.
We're just basically recommending-
Correct.
There is a phase in of stuff, whatever is allowable.
And if it turns out, because again, at the end of the day, we don't want to, if we don't want to fight with OPM, and OPM says, "No, it's two," then it would be, as other municipalities have done, 25% and a 75%. It would be-
Or 50/50.
Well, once you've implemented 25, you're left with the balance.
Right.
Right? So, but I've discussed it with the assessor. Right now, we're in October 1, 2023, in that year. Then we go October 1, 2024, then we go October 1, 2025, then theoretically, we revow. So, right, so technically, we have three years, even though they're saying you got to revow in two years.
Because of my two budgets.
But they're not going to, they're not going to send us a payment for-
So, how did, how did OPM come out with a schedule that they advertised to the entire state without checking the law? How did that happen?
I can't speak-
I mean, it sounds like the left hand's not talking to the right hand.
Listen-
Kevin, they sent out this.
I see it, it's, it's-
And Woodbridge and Bethany are completely different.
Everybody look at, look at this.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's full of errors.
Let me answer, let me answer the question this way. They believe that they're in compliance with the law. That's why they sent out what they sent. And it's for us, look, I just recently, when they changed the law, changing municipal elections from May to November, one of the things that affected Woodbridge and Bethany was, they didn't extend the terms of the incumbents. So, the incumbents expired, terms were going to expire on the day of the election.
So, you have no more to bet or personally?
So, unless you swore so-
A wild west zone, from May to November.
Right? So, it happens, right? People are passing laws and they're not looking at the consequences, they're not thinking. And, look, what I, what I stand firm on is, I'm comfortable in my analysis. I think it's driven by fact, and it's supported by law, and like in 2021, when we got to undersecretary to issue a memo, I think after consultation and understanding of our reasoning, we'll be able to get similar response. And if not, we'll deal with it. But, but you know, I believe we're well, we're well seated to take the position that we're taking.
I have no idea. So, has this letter gone to the OPM yet, or no?
No.
Okay. But it's going to.
Well-
Or some form of communication.
Between the assessor and myself, we'll be in communications with OPM. Yeah. So, you know, I always defer to the assessor, because he's inter, this is an assessment issue. It's not a legal issue.
Right.
Per se, and, you know, but I will be hopefully speaking with OPM's counsel of lawyers to get their understanding and hopefully make them understand ours.
Kevin, I know we have a motion on the table-
Yes.
-and we're still discussing it, but I would like to make a point for everybody on this team, and any, particularly people in the audience, but I would like to make it after we conclude our vote on the motion. But it has to do with that paragraph up there that's, that I pointed to, to a couple of people on this team. But I don't know if you want me to do it now.
No, let's finish the motion on the vote.
The last, the last meeting, though, we did a motion to this. Not the same wording, but Mr. Leahy made a motion to recommend to the Orange Board of Selectmen that they approve a phase in of the impact of property reevaluation to the maximum extent in accordance with law. Dr. Mann seconded the motion, and all were in favor.
I think that's good.
So, then we don't even-
Yeah, so, there's no action necessary.
You want to rescind your, rescind your motion.
But thank you for verifying. But we did.
Rescind that motion, in other words, it's the same thing as in the upper, on the yellow up there, right?
Right.
To pursue best available, we throw some, we put more words around best available.
Now, we have the town attorney presenting to us, so we have-
Well, maybe, maybe what you do is-
Confidence that-
We accept the-
Now that you have town attorney, accept the motion, redo the motion that you did last month, maybe, and just say rescind any previous motions.
Well, you know, the reality of it is-
Nothing's really changed, though.
Yeah, the, here's the reality. You're talking about factors. The factors are driven by terms.
Right.
So, that's going to work itself out, once we figure this out. So, what you've said is the most that you can say.
That's correct.
So, let's not screw it up by voting twice.
No, we'll be good, and I appreciate John catching that.
Can we say it on notes at the meeting that you would be contacted?
Yes.
The town attorney would be contacted.
Appreciate your time and your efforts on the-
Well, Kevin, here's the thing I would like to point out to the team and to the people in Orange, and anybody else who works.
It may take you a year to get this straightened out.
Well, we'll have it a year, so we'll figure, we'll figure it out.
I want to just focus on this paragraph that starts with the year, "There is no mandate." And-
No changes to municipality schedule.
"By aligning revaluation dates by geographic region," and I commented immediately, Kevin, to you about this last time, "A much larger, and I didn't have this in front of me, a much larger postal set is established and can be utilized in contracting of revaluation services. This creates economy of scale." Talk about stuff you hear at Harvard Business School forever, and you know, the proof is in when it happens. "Greater efficiency and potential, that good old potential, by post savings, all of which will directly benefit municipalities." Now, here you have a state who's coming up with this plan, that can't align their evaluation dates in the thing that was right in front of this plan, saying, "Wouldn't it be great to have all these things?" And we have all these benefits coming here. A casual conversation with John in his office between last week and now, I find out, well, we're going to, what are they going to do? Tell us who we have to, uh-
No, it's, it's got to go out for RFP. I mean, you have to put it out.
Mr. Leahy, I just want to point out one thing while we're looking-
That's amazing.
While we're looking at this, what's more important to me is, if you look at the prior paragraph-
Yes, sir.
-there are no changes to municipality scheduled for a 22 or 23 revow. If we conducted our revow in 2017, plus five puts us at 2022. OPM would put us back to 2021, which would make that an inaccurate statement. And, you know, not only that, but when you look at the plain language of the newly adopted legislation, you know, again, it says five years from when you last conducted. So, you know, the undersecretary's memo is inconsistent with the plain meaning of the legislation.
Vin, I'd like to, this memo here that you had highlighted, you didn't have a chance to send it to me, highlighted with color?
I'll send it to you.
Would you send it around so the team will have it in its records? At least my, my copy of it, and I'll distribute it to the team. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, the other thing with regionalization, there's only a small number of firms, of valuation firms that actually can do this work. There are large firms, but to handle nine cities in one year, I don't know how they would actually do that.
Well, they must be doing it now, because 186 of us-
No, but revaluations take time.
And, but you're, you can alter them however you want. You're not doing it all like this-
All I'm saying is this, if there's only two of them kept, right? And there's 180-
The last bid we had was two.
What's that?
The last bid we did for the one currently was-
If there's 186 of them-
The last bid we had was three.
And it goes over five years, there has to be 33 of them, right? A 30, more than 33, if my math is wrong. And so, you know, but to say they have economies of scale, I mean-
Well, the economies of scale would be for like, communities like, I think, like Orange, Milford.
What's the activity they are doing?
Woodbridge, I think those three you could align, but to include New Haven and West Haven, I don't see where you're getting to value, I don't see where you're getting to values.
But Kevin, what is the work activity? What is the work activity that provides economy of scale? Specifically, tell me. That's the type of question I would be asking.
Well, that's a question for OPM.
Right, but they can't even get dates right in their own document.
And by the way, the-
Let alone follow the law.
The schedule that I would follow, going to 2028, would put us in lockstep with towns of Bethany and Madison, which are more comparable communities for purposes of economies of scale, rather than, again, East Haven and Hampden and New Haven.
Right.
So, to further the legislative intent of Public Act 22-74, our proposed schedule seems to further that legislative intent.
Yeah, I would love to see what the parameters were for how they set it up.
But the legislature didn't set parameters, they left that to OPM, but they said, "Everyone does it in the same zone on the same year."
And then the backup schedule is completely different.
And so, so unless anyone has any other questions for me, if I-
No, we'll let you go and-
I have to get up to Monroe.
Hey, Jim, Vin, would you like to borrow my book? I have two copies, I was cleaning out my bookshelf today.
Yes.
This one's called F minus. I think you have a customer that might, might have-
I would love, I would love to, uh-
It's an extra copy, you can have it.
Well, thank you. Thank you all.
Thank you, sir.
And this is, I'm going to take this as a borrowing, not a gift.
And we appreciate your future assistance at that Board of Selectmen meeting.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, be well.
You too.
See you, Vin.
Okay, John, back to you.
Okay, John, you said you wanted to start at certain one, and you forgot.
Do you want to go back to the minutes?
Oh, yeah, we have to do the minutes, right.
So, then how do we get back to budget discussion?
Well, let's like, can we take a break?
Then we go back to it.
Okay. All right, so we're going-
Do we need a motion to go, to now take- Do we need a motion to go, to now take a break from number six to go to number three or?
We'll be okay. All right, so we'll do the, it's a discussion approval of minutes from March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four, regular meeting.
Baseball season's starting soon, John. I assume you're still batting leadoff, right?
Okay. I only have a couple of things on top of page two. The date, March fourth, twenty-three zero twenty-four. This is a correction there, the three taken out.
Very good.
On, on the one, two, three, third paragraph, and I'll need help with this. I don't remember speaking about road paving, but if you guys think I did, we'll leave it in.
I was the one who brought that up. It was kind of a, it was kind of a neglect like conversation. I don't think it was in this piece of the meeting, but there was a time, you might say, Mr. Leahy also mentioned perhaps.
But this, what's your name?
Potential transferring of, I don't think, and you could take out the one additional. I think you should put dollar signs. I don't know if that's right or not, but that's the way I would do it on one point two and one million. Those would be two edits I have.
And then on the, on the motion for the reevaluation, instead of extend, is that the right word there?
Extension?
You're right.
Possible. How about possible rather than extend? In other words, a phase in of the impact of property revaluation to, to four or five years, to, to the maximum number of years. How about that in accordance with the law?
Yeah, that's all.
Is that better?
If everybody agrees to that.
Very good. Should get Anna in on this, and she's our English whiz.
And then on the next paragraph, about the fourth sentence down, where it starts with, Cifrelli mentioned that Mr. Williams found a hundred and K, a hundred K from the old bond that will.
Will.
Will. Instead of can, we said that will be used, and it is being used. And then in the last page where I spoke about the money coming from the state for the early voting, that, that was ten thousand five hundred. And that's all I had.
Team, I got a couple of things on page two. Oh, in the big along paragraph, the second bullet under item six, the last sentence. I would have ended it this way. The bond, the board members agreed with this, that this loss from OVNA cannot be sustained long term. And they will review this matter, I put the word matter, I like to have a noun in there, more closely when they receive the current year operating data. Take out the numbers, current year operating data. Or, or current, you, you could take out the year, word year possible as well. Is phase in got a hyphen or not a hyphen? I'm curious, John. Is it just phase in?
I think it's just phase in.
I think it's just phase in.
Okay. Good, good. I, that's the way I typed it when I went back to look at my own stuff. In that fourth paragraph, a bullet under item six, in the last sentence, there will be, I think it would be better said, there needs to be. Will be kinda suggests you have.
And there doesn't need to be. Cause we said if we couldn't get a quorum, so it's not needs. There needs to be a special meeting of the board of selectmen, but not a joint meeting.
Oh, oh, okay.
That's correct.
Oh, okay. Then you're editing more than the will be. There needs to be a special meeting of the board of selectmen.
Yes.
Yeah, because they're the only authority that can.
I would say, I would take out the who would, to approve and vote on the property revow phase as recommended by the board of finance. I would even.
Yeah, cause ultimately, they're the only authority.
They're the only ones that could do anything.
Right.
And just because we didn't know what the, what the maximum allowed. I'm just going back to this motion. Maybe we can say if they, to, that they approve a phase in of the impact of the property reevaluation to the maximum number of the years in accordance with the law. Because that's what we said.
Yeah, no, no, that's.
Cause we didn't know if it was two or four.
I think we already did that edit.
Okay, I just didn't know if you, don't put.
Great minds think alike.
That's what I see.
Yeah.
All good? That's all I see, Ken.
Anyone else? Just a motion to approve as amended?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Post standing unanimous?
All right, now we go back.
Okay, we're back to our budget. What do you want, do we wanna deal with the capital first, John?
I put it there. I don't know if you wanna do budget first, capital first.
Would be better to do the budget.
It's kind of all the same.
Yeah.
Do budget, we'll go back to the budget.
Yeah, okay. So, John, if we start stretch with, straight with the budget, we have a bunch of files open here. You wanna start with revenue and, and expense to get that out of the way?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay. So we're gonna go, team, to the revenue and expense, which I think was in our.
What I did is I went back and I changed some of the numbers according to our meeting last week. I corrected the AMITI number on the expense side. On the revenue side, I zeroed out the library fee number since the board of selectmen made a motion to waive those late fees now. And then I, I just did it today. I put the numbers all in the board of finance recommended column, but they're pretty much the same numbers that you had last week that I sent you, just updating the items as we go.
So if we slide all the way down, we'll see that eighty-three million thing? Eighty-three, eight, one, five, seven, six, six, which seems to be the same as down here. Right. Very good?
So that's the, that's the number we have to get for, for, to balance it in the tax area. Jim, if you go up, if you go up to the tax area again, just so I could explain it a little bit more. You're on the.
You wanna go on the revenue side?
I wanna go on the revenue side.
Yeah, Roger that. Okay.
Okay, so until, until we know, and I talked to Rand Casey, and I thought what I could do is take the new reevaluation, take last year's, not reevaluation, grand list, take the new grand list, take last year's old grand list, subtract out the difference and take whatever percentage we need. Tell me, I can't do that. I can't come up with the mil rate like that. He's gonna give me a whole new grand list once it's decided on how many years.
Well, Kevin, I, I think I have more confidence in it happening this way than what happened fifteen years ago, was it?
Oh, yeah.
Or was it?
We had a surplus of, and then that turned into a deficit real quick.
Yeah, when I started, yeah. Okay.
So a lot of.
Good.
So what's gonna happen, since I can't come up with a grand list, a mil rate number, our booklets that go out, they usually have, if the budget passes, the mil rate will be this. I'm gonna have to say at this, at time of publication, it's an unknown number.
It is.
But we should have.
We sent the mil rate the night of the budget vote.
Yeah, but we've always had.
In the past, we've acknowledged, but we just don't know what it is right now.
Right, right.
But we know what the percent overall increase in spending is.
Yes.
We just don't know what.
Right. Well, I would think by the night of the budget hearing, that I'll have that number by then.
But the books will not?
We better.
I hope so.
What's the night of the budget hearing? Twenty-fifth?
Twenty-fifth.
Well.
Twenty-fifth.
What, this is kind of important, yeah?
It's not gonna happen because the board of selectmen's not meeting till April eleventh. And I gotta go to print way before that. I'm going to print the week before.
Okay.
So the only thing you won't have is the mil rate?
Correct.
Mil rate.
Which in years past, we haven't, haven't always had, right?
No, we've always had it. We've always.
I don't think we had it when we did the five-year phase in. I don't think we had it.
I don't know. I wasn't here for them, but for my seven, eight years.
Oh, yeah, yeah, cause we haven't had this.
Yeah, this is the first time you've had it.
We haven't had a phase in.
Kevin, we'll, we'll, we'll have the mil rate. We just don't know whether or not, how much taxing we're giving to.
No, we won't have the mil rate because the, the phase in's gonna adjust the commercial and the residential to a different dynamic than they're at now.
Right.
Oh, so when, so when I come up with this chart here, like this, or, or whatever.
Now, go to, go to my mil rate calculation chart.
Will do.
That'll be a better one to use.
Okay.
That number up there on real property is gonna change. Like I said, if you, if you, if you take, I thought you could take last year's taxable amount.
Take the difference.
Take the difference, twenty, twenty-five percent, whatever it is, and then figure out the mil rate like that. And I did it today, just to see how close.
Yep.
And I could tell you what I came up with if you wanna. Give me a second, I could pull it up. It's not gonna be up on the screen because I'm not tied to the screen.
But he's just gonna have to take that new net grand list, you know, all of the increases and just modify it by either twenty-five percent or twenty.
Right.
But the mil rate will now change, Kev?
Oh, it has to.
Yeah.
So this mil rate.
Cause that grand list is at a hundred percent of the thirty-eight percent increase in the eighteen. We're gonna be knocking that down. That's gonna, so that's gonna change by a significant amount.
It'll go up, right?
I did, I did twenty, when I did my little calculation, Mark says I can't do. I did twenty percent, and the grand list would go down to thirty-one point four to raise the taxes we need.
From thirty-two point.
Right. Right. That's my figure.
Yeah, the mil rate'll go up, but the grand list'll go down.
Where'd you get the thirty-two, Kev?
No, the mil rate will go down, the grand list will go up.
Yeah, because he's phasing it in over.
Oh, yeah, yeah, you're right. For that grand list, it'll go down. That's what I mean.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would be, that would be over, that would be over five years, twenty percent.
So what we have here is a total taxable amount that assumes that we're phasing it, that we're, it's full in.
That's the full in number right there. The twenty percent in my figure, again, Mark says I can't do this. My figure is one nine eight four, two nine nine, one nine nine, at twenty percent.
Well, whatever. If Mark says we can't do it, and you work with him.
We'll see how, we'll see how, I got that, the number, I think. We'll see how close we are when he gives that to me.
Now, this is the same number that you, we talked about last week, in case there's people watching at home, right? Okay. And this one here is.
Actually, that number came down a little bit. Last week is twenty-six point two-nine.
Right?
Right.
So, and here we have this amount of money.
Right.
And what we can do, I believe it's right here, yeah, is kinda just peek at the revenue. Because the revenue, these things have to match.
Right.
In other words, this seventy-five here matches this seventy-five down here.
Right.
Right? And of course.
I think, I, I believe, I believe when you do that, you, every year, we're off by a little rounding.
Yep.
And I usually add something into the expense this year.
Right, right, to make it balance.
Yeah. This year, we're off like five grand, and I'm gonna take something somewhere out of the expense to make it balance.
Okay.
I didn't wanna go up another tick on the percentage.
For five thousand, no.
Yeah, wasn't worth it.
Kevin, I have something that I, that I kinda did a sensitivity analysis on, and it's, it relates to these two documents here. Because what we said last time and another source in our revenue, right down at the bottom of our, I believe it's down the bottom here, John. Oh, when you put these things this way, you can't scroll them down too easily.
So are we, so we're set?
Hey, you need a, you need a motion to bring this budget down to the public hearing on April twenty-fifth.
Well, I'd like to surface an issue. I don't know if it has to do with this motion or not, but I'm, I'm kinda dealing. Here we go. And we are putting that one point two million out of our bank account in here, right, John?
That's out of the reserve, right?
Yeah, we went over that, the last meeting.
Okay. Well, what I was doing, team, was this, here, I'll, I'll put it this way. I was asking myself this question. I basically changed this number here, which will change your number over here. Right? And basically what I did is I'll just make them all yellow so you can see them. I basically got up by, well, twenty-six point two-five, twenty-six three five four five, twenty-six five five two, I'm doing, Joe? And what you got, every time you put it up by that, I'll call it a tenth, but it gets a tenth and some decimal point. It goes up by the same amount each time, which mathematically makes sense. What I was trying to do is how much would this have to be raised so that we weren't using up that one point two million? That's what I was trying to ask myself. I'm just curious.
That's a good, that's a good question.
You know?
John, you said seven fifty of that is coming from the AMITI piece?
Right.
Yes.
Right? And so it's really about a half a million.
Seven fifteen.
Well, here's what I then did, Kev, is this. I then went back to our property, all of us, right? And again, since we've been using the home I'm more, most familiar with, what I did is here's your twenty-six, twenty-five, right? So hold that thought on, I'll just write it over here, the sixty-six oh four was the total tax increase under, excuse me, sixty-four.
Yep.
Thank you. All right, and that's it, what I'll call the twenty-six point two-five model of the universe, right? And so then I said to myself, well, what would happen if I made this twenty-six point? I'm gonna go for the whole shebang and, and go up five of those points, okay? And so it turns out this, this is, you have to kinda go into the cell to do it. I had to figure that out, but I did. And so now you can see what that would do if I got, if I did the numbers right, twenty-six point seven five, is that that would make this number, whoa, I didn't change it here. Whoa.
Yeah, you gotta do that.
No, it's not done.
No, it was the twenty-six.
No, Kevin's got it, right? Kevin's got it. So it's eight oh eight. All right. So we probably shouldn't have used the pennies, you know, so you go crazy. So you can see the difference between the two is what each house, or at least an average house, my house, I'd be paying a hundred and forty-four dollars more in that model of the universe. And I'd be asking you guys, is the math, do you think I'm doing the math right? But what I was trying to do, again, was ask myself, okay, if for some reason we, we wanted not, and I don't think I'm for this, I just was curious, what, what, how much would I have to raise that mil rate in order to cover the one point two or thereabouts, right, to, to, that we're taking out of our, our fund out? Right? So, I think that tells me that, okay, that's the number, um, and that number's not small, right? You could see it would add not just-
We would make it already bad here worse.
Right, worse, yeah, I, but I figured it was worth the analysis, so I will go back to here and put in the proper number. Uh, but I just wanted, in case this said, someone said, were to say, hey, that's a good idea. But that's the analysis I did, for what it's worth.
Well, I, I appreciate you doing that, Jim, because it kinda gives us a concrete explanation. I wonder, and I, it's not, it does, it's not a big deal, but the twenty, the twenty-six point, I think, four or five that you had up there-
Oh, and the other thing?
The other, um, thing, got us to that, yeah, twenty-six point four or five, was that that five-seventy-eight?
Yes.
Um, which, again, that plus the AMITI would actually, the AMITI, um, break, right? Because if seven hundred, thereabouts, seven hundred thousand, thereabouts, is, we're getting back from the AMITI break, that would actually get us to that one point two. So you wouldn't actually have to go the whole shebang, you could go to twenty-six point four-five, if we didn't wanna touch the fund balance, but I'm comfortable using the five hundred thousand on the fund balance.
Okay. The, um-
So wouldn't go up by a hundred and forty-four, I could go up by maybe seventy.
Yeah.
So, I, I gave that, and the only other thing I, I did was I just updated these slides, so when I send them out to you tonight, uh, I updated them so that they had the proper numbers, because it came down a little bit. The four-eight-eight didn't change, if you remember, but the, the amount, remember John said the amount had come down a bit? So the slides now, uh, reflect that. The only one of the thing, as a summary slide, I'll show you, is this one here. These are just various phase-in options, one-year, two-year, uh, three-year, even the four-year. Uh, and here's kind of a summary chart of the percentage increases, uh, I use my four-ninety-five lumber road only, but as a proxy, and how much percentage it would go up by each year.
Makes a big difference.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, it does.
Yeah, yeah, it, it's, last time it said four point oh, I, I, when I discovered it was three point nine-six, I said, we should advertise three point nine-six. And, and so I put it up to two decimal places. So when I send this out tonight, you'll have this as well, as well as the other slides, that are pretty much the same.
I mean, John, is there any discussion about the phase-in, as far as shorting it, shortening it? Or, or is there a discussion that five years is the way to go?
That's up to you guys.
That's really up to the board to select, though, but-
Well, your, your recommendation to them was basically the max.
Well, we, we, we had a motion last time, Kev, and it kinda said what was on this thing. I, I wrote down unanimously, I thought everybody agreed, I think it's in the notes.
Most we can do.
You know?
Okay. So then, if we're good with the fund balance, is there a motion to allow John to send this updated budget to print?
Let's use, uh-
Sure.
Let's use the number on the expense side, make that part of the motion.
Yeah, I'll make the motion to, uh, send to print, or I guess that's another great word.
Into the public hearing.
Budget fiscal year two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, to present at the public hearing, a budget of eighty-three million, eight-hundred-and-fifteen thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty-six.
Second.
Motion made, motion seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, abstained.
I'd like to, I'll add to that motion.
Thank you.
That would be a four-point-four-five percent increase, that's just the number that's sitting right there.
Okay. I lost my, here it is. Okay, item five, discussion and possible vote to transfer funds from general fund to capital fund.
So, Johnny, what we look at?
Now, what I, what I could say here, if you don't wanna do this now, you probably don't have to do it now. The same thing with, uh, voting to approve any capital. If you wanna wait until April or May, you could probably do that.
Can we tee up the discussion now, on what we would support from it?
It's up to, it's up to you guys.
The thing with me now is, okay, my brain's not working. To give public, if we're gonna fund paving, to give them a chance to-
Yeah, I think that's the one. Because they gotta get the, uh-
Right.
They gotta get moving.
Yeah. They gotta get their heads moving, because they gotta head, get ahead of the game. So I would, the last time, we had a number in this, I don't know whether it was this one, John, or the fund balance one? Let's see what the fund balance is.
I think it's the fund balance one. There's your, there's your one point two million for the budget stabilization that we just talked about, for the new budget. And we said if we move another one point five to capital, that would then, I then have the new number is, it's a little different. Eighty-three, fifteen, we said seven-sixty-six, I got one-thirty-three for some reason.
Okay, hold on, we'll get the right number in, no problem.
It's not gonna matter.
No.
Six hundred dollars, so it's gonna matter.
Well, let's, but let's, I mean, it only takes three seconds to get this number, right? So let's just get the number right, right? So you just copy it, right? And then we go into fund balance, and if we paste it as a value, then we're all good. I mean, screw it. All right, so now all we have to do is, um, just use this one, right? So we'll just grab it from up here, Johnny. All right, and do the same thing down here. All right. Okay, so now we got new numbers. Last time, I remember putting in something like this, paving, like this. I don't know if it's, it should be separate, John, I'll be happy to, you know, do whatever you want, but-
You shouldn't put that in there, because the paving, you take out of capital, out of the capital account, you don't take that out of there.
Well, we have to-
So, so you gotta figure out what you wanna move to capital, and then out of that, you gotta decide what you're gonna do for paving, or any other capital.
Okay, so I'll put it over here, if we put a number in there, I can put paving over here and say, uh, some number.
Million bucks.
If you kinda agree to that one point five, then let's go to the capital account, put that one point five in, and you'll see what the new balance is, and we could talk about paving and some of the other capital items. There's one item I think you really need to move on. The police department needs some new servers down there that are part of the capital account.
Well, what I'm trying to do, John, I'm trying to get to the point when we subtract another million, or whatever that number is, that is directly connected to paving. I wanna see what happens to this fund balance.
No, that's the one point five, there's a one point five transfer there now.
If you, if you agree to that number, then that goes over to the capital side, and that's your money you have for capital.
And then we can decide.
Of which-
Well, but, well, then we could say some other number than one point five.
You could, you absolutely could.
Okay, so when me trying to put in a line for paving of a million, or pick a number, at least it's a placeholder, I'm trying to do two at one, two things at once here.
Now, you're trying to determine out of the one point five.
You're gonna end up double counting that number.
Out of the one point five, how much is paving? That's what you, yeah, yeah.
Well, we don't have, on that capital sheet that we do with Ralph, we never have paving on it.
Yes, we have, yes, we have. We've taken money out of there for paving in past years, last year.
No, we've taken money out of capital for paving.
No, no, we take money out of, out of, out of our fund balance and move it into capital, and then pay the paving out of capital.
Correct.
Okay, all I'm saying is that when we get together with Oakenhurst's crew, right? We're not seeing capital on that list.
No, because he doesn't put capital on his list.
No, he just put paving on his list, he puts capital on his list.
All right, so to me, I see, it's clearly a separate thing. I, I see the math, you have to go to capital before you distribute it, I'm, I'm in on that. But that leads me to, since we're probably gonna be spending more than one point five, this number's way too low.
Well, I don't want, I don't want you to go below-
Well, that's why I'm trying, well, let me put down two point five, and let's see what happens.
And then there's, there's other things coming up, like they're doing that-
Roger that, but I'm trying to get to what happens to this number.
Well, I want, I want us to know all the possible capitals that are coming up.
Okay, so where's that?
Where's that sheet?
Where's the sheet?
The capital sheet? You got it open there, right at the beginning.
But that doesn't give us what's coming up.
No, you gotta-
We haven't approved anything yet.
No, you gotta go to your book to look at the sheet that Oakenhurst gave you, that we gave you with Oakenhurst.
Okay.
And even on that sheet, there's things that are coming up that were beyond his percy.
Okay, so since we're gonna discuss this tonight, I'm very happy that we have here somewhere in this computer, the town budget. Is this it, Johnny?
Yes.
Yes, that's it.
Good. All right.
And you could take number one off of there.
That's done?
That's being handled by bond funds that we've had left over.
All right, so we can-
And that contract was given out this week.
So, project cost, we can put in zero for our purposes?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And cumulative money, I must have put that in. There we go, okay.
And that one, two of these, got it, too.
Yeah, we can take that off. Okay, so now we can kinda do some-
My, my most important one on there is number three for the police department.
Okay.
That runs his cameras, that, the schools, they oversee the schools and power supply.
All right. Um, so capital reserve, so that would be capital. So I'm gonna throw that as if we were throwing it in, sounds like we are. Uh, so, and we can add that thing up at the bottom once we get done, so that'll be a fast way to do it. All right, any other things, Johnny, from your perspective, you're closer to it than we are?
Kevin, what do you wanna, you wanna talk about that bucket truck that we talked about?
Yeah, I think we could spread that over five years.
Well, I could tell you, I got a, I had-
Yeah, lease.
I had, I had Britton get a price, and he was able to get the price to me late today. I'll tell you, I could tell you what it is.
Hundred and seventy-six dollars and eight fifteen twenty.
Did I, oh, I sent it to you?
Yeah, around four o'clock, I think.
Oh, okay, I told you I got it late.
Now, is that the, that's the, the real cost, around the one-seventy, Kevin?
Well, there's some other things they gotta add to it.
Oh, okay.
It's like one ninety-two or something.
No, but there's a discount of the twenty-nine, but then you have, you have, it's, it's basically with the interest, it would be forty-five ninety-two a year.
Forty-five, no.
Forty thousand five hundred ninety-two dollars.
Oh, forty thousand.
So I would have to do that, because we did that twenty-something years ago, and that truck's still on the road. And we had a, did it, so we didn't pay it all upfront, we paid it, we spread it out over five years, and, you know, whether it's in the operating budget next year or capital, it's not taking all the resources this year.
So if we say this, this heading of this column here is, uh, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five capital, is that a proper heading, Kevin, what we're starting to put in here?
Yes.
Okay. And then we can add them up at the bottom, and, but we can get a running total, too. Five-year plan, I guess, I'm just trying to document something as we go.
John, what about the police department roof? I would think that would be a priority, no?
He's been asking for it for about four years, it's fifty years old. At some point, we're either gonna do it proactively, or it's gonna leak like the fire huts over here, and we're gonna have to do it.
There's no five-year plan we can do, uh?
Is there another one on there besides the police department?
Are we financing that five years in, Kevin?
That?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
What I would put in, if you wanna, Jim, I would add a line there and put in the paving.
Uh, okay.
And see what your totals are adding up to.
Um, okay, so we don't want that to be that way, so we can just do it this way. Okay, so we have a paving.
And there's other issues with Public Works, right, John? Isn't there like a bucket, no, the bucket, the backhoe and a chipper or something's broken?
He's talking about the backhoe is pretty old, and the chipper doesn't work, I guess. But I don't have any, I think the backhoe is on there.
We have road paving down at the bottom.
Do we?
Yeah.
It's at the very bottom, I missed it.
Yeah, one point two, there it is.
It's already there?
It was on the list, stand corrected, thank you.
That was a highlight.
All right, but it's that number, but you're correct, Kevin, thank you. Probably gonna put something in it, right, so we'll just put it right there.
I would, uh, I would also do something for the school.
The HVAC upgrades?
That's a big nut.
Yeah, I would, that's, that's, that's a, that's a problem, because as I said before, Anna, you probably weren't here.
Oh, this is a problem, right, John?
That's, that's only-
Yeah, that's-
For the air conditioning, it doesn't include any of the electrical or anything like that over there. They're talking about ten million to do that, somewhere in the neighborhood. They're actually doing a study now. They hired last week a company to do a study on all their buildings, it rules everything, yeah, to see what the systems are, and what condition the buildings are, yeah. So I don't know what's gonna come back with that, but, you know, you're looking at old buildings, so who knows?
For the interest rates to drop again, it's going on to a big pot.
And that number, and that number thirty-one right there is a big one also.
And the schools.
Oh, that's the Culver project.
Yeah, and they're working on design.
Thirty-one number, or thirty-one Excel sheet?
Thirty-one Excel sheet, I'm sorry, I sorta gave you the number.
So-
No, it's okay.
But it's just something to think about that is coming down the road.
So that one is, that part, project is not covered by ARPA funds, at all?
We, we have a million dollar in ARPA funds.
Yeah, we have that, too, we have a million, that's all we have left.
Now, is the engineering and design work for Brickside Drive being paid for by ARPA?
Being done right now.
By ARPA funds?
Yes, you guys voted for that, a while back.
Yeah.
All right, so I'm just gonna write total here while we're chatting. Okay, so-
Put in, put a number in for your paving, too.
You just gotta drag the one point two million over, or whatever number.
Well, we can drag it, I'll put one point two, but, but, you know, eventually, we'll see what, what we got.
Okay. And then I would, I would go up, and I would do something for the school up at the top there.
Okay.
If you go up towards the top, then.
Yeah, I will. Thank you, John.
I would do, uh, either seven or eight, or both of them, if you feel comfortable doing it.
How about we throw all three of these?
What are hands-free fixtures? I probably asked that day, I don't remember.
Uh, you know, you, you go to the sink, and you wave your hands, and the water comes out, and things like that.
It never comes out, it shuts off after two seconds.
You gotta go like this.
My problem seems they never go on.
Yeah.
Well, I've gone in places, I put my jacket down on the, on the thing, and then there's, they, all the water, that's coming out of the jacket. All right, well, this one point eight million, if you wanted to do the roof at the police station, four hundred thousand, uh, for the roof, and a million two for paving, it'd be one point eight.
And then we have a total of two point seven eight nine, if we transfer five hundred, a million and a half tonight.
Is that clip paving? Did we put anything down in there for paving?
He's got one point two.
I put one point two.
So you got one eight, you're up to one eight in?
Yeah, I got one eight, so let's just put one eight, and just see what happens on the other sheet, okay? So, fund balance, Johnny, make that one eight, is that what we?
No.
No.
Wrong, we gotta go to the capital.
Oh, uh, oh, I'm in the wrong sheet, sorry. So, right there.
Yeah, put your two and a half million in there that you had over on the other column.
It was one eight?
We were gonna do one point five, some move.
Well, you had two and a half, I thought.
I know, but that, he was just, he was just looking, he was just using.
Oh, no, I was just doing, I mean, we could put in this very specific number, one eight, one one, and, and find the number.
No, don't do that. You make it a even number, you don't wanna.
Okay. Now, that's a negative, right?
No.
No.
Still good.
That's what, that's you showing as a transfer amount now.
Oh, we're trench, oh, 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 thanks, Kevin. So, we, we basically have spent, we still have a balance here of three million.
You have a balance of three million, so now put your number in.
Mine is the one eight, one one, if you do that.
Oh. No, I think that's, oh, I see, you-
Put your, put your one eight, one one in there someplace, not there.
Not there.
Oh, okay, I see, well, let's put the, the actual numbers in, I mean, it isn't gonna take that long, right?
Just copy and paste, yeah.
Yeah, I could copy and paste, let's just do it, let's, uh, let's get a couple-ish ways of doing this here. So, where is the other one? It's inbox, no, it isn't. It's, I mean, it's-
Over West Lake.
This one here?
That one.
Yeah, thank you, Kevin. So we got one two, and we could slide up. So what I'm going to do, yeah, I just-
I'm looking for the good news in the budget. Is there any good news in the budget?
Yeah, Joe, we're taking care of our people.
Phasing.
You know? So, I'm hoping that this goes in. Well, Joe, there's an option here. Uh, oh, I see, I did it the wrong way, sorry, team. Paste as a, as a value. Okay, so, and these are all negatives, correct?
Yep.
Kev? Yep. So, oh, man. There we go. And we can put it here. And we can put it here. Violation of the- Okay, so we'll be down to one point three, if I've got it right, Kevin, and while you guys are chatting about it, I'll just go wrap the names of these things. So those three of these, I think, Joe. And, let's see, police server, I guess we've got that already, right? So I have five different things, which I think matches up with what we have over here, Kev. We got the forty, we got the seventy-eight, the thirty-six, the four hundred, and the one point two.
Yep.
Right?
Uh, where's the, where's the police?
Isn't that the first one?
Police server?
That's the forty?
Forty thousand forty.
No, the forty, it's the bucket truck.
Oh.
That's a bucket truck.
Oh.
Number, item three up there.
Item three.
That's the servers, that's the most important one.
That's the most important one.
So I'm gonna put that there. I'm going to put this number here, four zero five nine two, I think it is, right? And this number is incorrect.
Fifty-five. Fifty-five.
Was it? Kevin, three, thank you. Five-five.
Eight seventy-nine.
Eight seventy-nine, thank you, team. Which would make us down to 1.2. And we need a name for the... There it is there. And I think that's...
See, call it a day.
I would, because we could take another look at it later.
Yeah, it's not urgent.
Right.
The only thing...
I won't...
I'd vote on the bucket truck if we can, the paving and the server, right?
Yeah. I won't let him, for the server, I'll let him go out and start getting, ordering that, because there's probably a lead time on that. Just about everything else, I won't let him, well, maybe the bucket truck. Everything else, I won't let him do until the budget passes.
If he could, if he's got this quote, do it. Because, I mean, the last one lasted 24 years.
I need to run that by Jimmy, too, because it came in too late. I wanna make sure it's what he wants before they actually order it.
You mean the servers?
No, the bucket truck.
Oh, yeah.
So, who got this? This is Donnie or Bob Brennan?
Well, he got, I think, the mechanic down the garage got it, but...
All right, so we're saying, Johnny, that we are tonight voting to consider or to approve?
All right, you got a couple of things. First, you're gonna have to make a motion to move the money from the fund balance to capital. And then you're gonna make a motion to fund those items out of capital.
So, fund balance to capital, we're gonna move...
Yeah, change that, get rid of the 2.5 and make it 1.8.
1.8?
Negative.
Thank you, John.
So, are we comfortable with this?
Yeah.
Yep. Okay, so that takes care of that.
We know we're gonna have some other things coming down the road that we don't wanna... We don't wanna wipe out the capital balance or that balance, and then, John, we have the ARPA balance of a million, but...
We're gonna have to do something with that by the fall, because it has to be...
Has to be obligated.
Obligated by December 31st. I read a spot where it said you might have to have a contract.
You do. You do.
Do we... Is this being held for like the culverts?
Well, that's what my thought was, because they're doing one in the spring now at Old Country Road that we funded. Then in case they run into some problem, that could be where we could get the money to solve it. They're getting money to do Pine Tree Drive from the state or federal government, and we might need some money to cover that.
My question would be here. Do we leave the 1,093, or do we take 300 out and move it or and put it towards roads to get that up to a million and a half?
Oh.
But I don't wanna overspend if we have areas...
That's idea. You wanna do that.
We did this last year. We only authorized Donnie to do a million, then we gave him the other half million for the fall, because remember that they do it in two pieces.
Then we'll do this 1.2 if everybody agrees.
Yeah, and then if we have a little bit more for...
Then we'll wait.
And that gives us a little time to...
See how this happens, okay?
Because we may also be able to use that. I have our checking. We might have some money to be able to do that problem over at the pool that we didn't do because of the cost. Remember the last bond? We had money in for the deamidifier up at the pool. We may have some money to be able to do most of that. So, we might need a little someplace else, and that might be a good place to use that. Yeah.
But by the fall, we might have to designate all of this.
Right, and get a contract.
Yeah, you do. You have to obligate and have a contract.
So, we got, that's money on the tag?
Yeah, we need to take that.
Yeah.
It's gotta be obligated by December 31st.
I'd fire myself if we didn't take care of that.
If worse comes to worst, what we do, we use whatever's there for paving, and we have Bob go out and pre-buy the asphalt. We've done that before, and we designate, so we have a contract.
Worst case, and then we'll use other money for the other things if we don't have it, okay?
Right, right.
Okay, so, Kevin, first of all, we have this sheet, so I'm just gonna save this thing. But I'm gonna put this now in the folder for tonight.
Can we get a quieter chair on the budget?
Yeah.
Let's see, this is this year, and we're talking tonight, which is the home stretch.
Chairs on the back that we're gonna replace here came from the library. She got a grant for new chairs over there. And we're taking the ones she had. They're pretty good shape.
Let me do this. Let me do this. I'm gonna call it...
Didn't this table originally come from Bear?
Yes.
Yes. Remember that. Used to work there.
So, were the chairs, I think, right?
Yeah, the chairs are from Bear, too.
And all our office equipment, I think, came from there, too, right?
Yeah.
All right, so...
So, we need a motion to first move the 1.8 from fund balance to capital.
Sure. I'll make a motion to move the 1.8 from fund balance to capital to fund the projects for the upcoming year.
Okay.
Motion from Kevin. Is there a second?
Sure, I'll second it.
By Jim, any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I'm staying unanimous. Thank you. Okay, now back to the capital sheet, Jim.
Capital sheet, Roger that, which is this one?
Yes. So, John, do we wanna do just one motion for the top three?
Yeah, probably, right?
One, yeah, this is where I think you said vote.
Or do we take the next two also and just hold off on the roof for now?
I thought you were gonna do them all, actually.
Well, we weren't sure. You said maybe wait for the budget, but...
Oh, I... You could do it all, subject to the budget passing, if you wanna do the motion like that.
Okay.
Can they still act...
Well, no, we wanna do the paving right now.
Yeah, that's what, we wanna make sure that a couple of these can go forward.
He gets permission to do it, right?
You know what? Just pass it all, and I'll be able to hold it and not let them have the funds unless it passes, other than the paving.
The police roof is critical?
Yeah, let's do that.
Let's go along with them.
But if we make a motion, if we make up, if we vote to have all of this go forward, irrespective of whether the budget passed or not, it has to go forward.
It's coming out of capital, yeah. It's happening.
But it's not coming out until I allow it to come out.
That's always the case.
Yeah. I won't allow them to go out on the roof or the bathroom stuff until the budget passes.
Past, okay.
Right.
Yeah.
And eventually...
And I've done that before.
And there's no stipulation that the funding has to be approved or has to be tied to July 1, right? It could be done before that, right?
Right.
Only the budget passed the budget.
Correct. Yep.
So, we need what motion?
We need a motion, and I would name each of those things with the dollar amount. Or as recorded, and Deb could put them in with the proper names.
Deb, here, listen. We're gonna do a motion to for six capital items.
To allocate money from the capital fund for the following items.
You got that, Deb? Okay, paving, 1.2 million, you can see it. Police server. You can see the number there?
Fifty-five, eight seventy-nine, yep.
All right, replacing the bucket truck, 40,000.
With a five-year lease, yep.
Five-year lease, 40,00592 for next year. Bathroom renovations in Peck Place, 78,000. Bathroom fixtures in all the schools, 36,940, and a replacement of the police department roof, 400,000. That's the motion.
Second.
She made a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, I'm staying unanimous.
Good, good work.
Yep.
I was on that roof years ago as a tour.
I was, too.
On the police roof?
Yeah. He took me and all three of them on it. It wasn't fun.
John, as I'm doing these, do you want me to be sending you what I have here that's documented?
Yeah, because I'm gonna copy them into myself.
We'll do that before we leave tonight. We don't have to do it during the meeting, right?
Okay, we already took care of seven under the budget, so item number eight, discussion and possible vote to allocate funds from special duty account to purchase two police vehicles for $120,000.
Yeah, we've done this in the past. This was his request in his budget for the 120. This account here is the police special duty, which I have a good balance in. And we paid last year for two police cars, two motorcycles on it, and we could do the same thing.
Is this the one, John? I just wanna make...
Yeah, that's my actual worksheet to do.
This is different.
Yeah, this looks different.
This is the last item.
Yeah, that's the last item.
For the server room expansion.
Okay.
Where do we...
Oh, that's the last item, okay. You're right.
Where am I, Johnny?
Uh...
We don't have it.
You don't have it.
Okay.
You don't have... It's part of the budget discussion, though.
Okay.
So, I need somebody to make a motion to expend 120,000 out of that account.
Out of current year budget.
Current year budget.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Kevin?
I can say it.
Say it by Joe. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, I'm staying unanimous.
And this won't wait for the budget to pass.
This is in the current year.
Just get done. I mean, there's a lot of leeway on the police cars now waiting also.
All right, item number nine, apparently jumped the gun with general fund. We already did that.
Sounds like next year we'll put that one earlier than that.
This was under budget discussion is everything, and that's all.
Yeah.
We're good there. Sorry about that.
But it's good, so we make sure we do it.
I'll get sanctioned for going out of order.
Yeah, what six should have underneath it is five, 10, nine, whatever.
Okay, now, Jim, you can go back to that dollar.
Request to transfer funds for server room expansion at the police department. Apparently, that's gonna be 83,000?
Yes. I think I gave you the quote, too. I might have gave you the quote.
It might be on the sheet right here.
Oh, yeah.
CSP communications?
It's really, it's really more, but if you remember, about three years ago, you allocated some money to do it, and it never got done because it was more, the cost came in more than what we allocated. So, he's kind of been working on this for a couple of years, and he's got this new quote. It really, it really needs to be done. We've added a lot of servers down there. One of the servers that run the phone system for both the town and the schools is down there. Besides all his other stuff, he just got a license plate reader that he's got equipment down there for, and this room really needs to be expanded.
License reader on the car, right?
No, on a pole.
Oh, okay. Because he already had it on the car, right?
Yeah, but now they're better on poles.
So, John, is this upgrades for a server room?
It's a servers room that he's gonna, he's gonna take some of the hallway away to expand it.
Yep, gotcha. Now, who services the IT for police? Do they have an internal police officer?
No. Well, they have a guy that helps, but it's pretty much Paul, Josh, and Chris.
Okay.
And this motion here, if you allocate the money, will be subject to board of selectmen approval of the contract, because we really don't meet as a group till May, because we have our budget hearing in April. It's gonna be on the board of selectmen's agenda next month.
So, we're transferring money out of one to another?
We're transferring it out of his labor accounts.
Salary accounts.
Salary accounts to this other building repair account.
Okay.
He's got, he's got a little extra money in the salary accounts like he's had in past years, so it's a good use.
Went over a threshold that all of a sudden has to come to us, or do we do...
It would fall, if we didn't take it, it would fall to fund balance.
Oh, okay.
Right, yeah, he can't move money without our approval.
Labor money he can't move. Nobody can move labor money without your approval, not even, not even myself.
He's got a vacancy, does he have a vacancy in the supervisors line item? Is that like a...
He did for a while, but he's at full staff now.
Okay.
So, do you wanna make that motion?
I make the motion, Jim.
Is there a second?
Second.
Eighty-three thousand.
Any further discussion?
Eighty-three thousand from the two counts specified.
Subject to the board of selectmen. We had your line.
Right, subject to the board of selectmen approving the contract.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose, I'm staying unanimous. Great. I never thought at 7:25 I'd be going to item 11.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move.
Second.
Meeting adjourned at 7:25.